Welcome to the Board of County Commissioners Public Hearing. The Board of County Commissioners will consider the transmittal and adoption of amendments to the future of the Hillsborough Comprehensive Plan. Following the Comprehensive Plan Amendment Public Hearing, the Board will also hold second and final public hearings for adoption of five Land Development Code amendments. And so tonight, we have, I believe Commissioner White is absent, but I do not have any official letters to record. There may be an issue with that, but we do have a hybrid meeting with Commissioner Hagan appearing virtually. And also, I know Commissioner Overman expects to be here shortly. So at this time, if we could have a roll call vote?
Chair Kim?
Here.
Cohen?
Here.
Hagan?
Here.
Myers?
Here.
Overman? Smith?
Here.
White? Thank you, you have a call.
Thank you. And tonight, we will start with the CPA 21-18, the Future Land Use Map Amendment, the known Assassin Road and Kingsway Road. They have requested a continuance. And so if we have a motion, if there's someone like to make a motion for a continuance, we could move it to December 16th.
So moved.
Second.
Which one?
It's the known assassin Kingsway, the last one, 21-18.
Thank you.
Okay, and so we have a motion by Commissioner Cohen and seconded by Commissioner Myers, and hearing no further discussion. Can you please do a roll call vote?
Kim?
Yes.
Cohen?
Yes.
Hagan?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Thank you, motion carried, five to zero.
Thank you.
And the date for that is the 16th, and the time is 6:00 PM, just for the record.
Thank you. Okay, and what we will move to now, until we get a, we are going to need a sixth person here, or anyone who has a privately initiated amendment will be, it will be possible for them to request that they have it continued, but I believe Commissioner Overman will be here shortly. But this first one is not a privately initiated amendment. It is a, the property rights element of a Comprehensive Plan text amendment coming from the state legislature. So Ms. Arnida, are you, who is, Ms. Linehart, are you going to, or I'm not sure who is going to give a seat?
Yes ma'am.
Okay, thank you.
I could introduce it.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you so much. Good evening, Madam Chair and Commissioners, Melissa Linehart, Planning Commission Staff, Liaison to Unincorporated Hillsborough County. Thank you for that introduction. As you mentioned, we have three items on the agenda tonight. We have one Comprehensive Plan text amendment and two Comprehensive Plan map amendments. The first plan amendment on the agenda this evening is Item A1, that is HC CPA 21-20, and Mr. Mark Hudson will be presenting this item. Mr. Hudson, the floor is yours.
Thank you. Good evening, Commissioners. Again, Mark Hudson, Planning Commission Staff. If HTV could bring up my PowerPoint, thank you very much. This is a little bit of unusual item, as actually we're considering two different text amendments for one single agenda item. The Planning Commission has developed two versions of a property rights element, and at the conclusion of my presentation, we are seeking your direction on which one to transmit to the Florida Department of Economic Opportunity for their review. If I could have the next slide. So as I mentioned, we have two versions of this property rights element. This is required by some recently passed legislation, as you know from your workshop, House Bill 59, which became effective on July 1st. And overall, this legislation is intended to ensure that property rights are considered in the local decision-making processes, not only, of course, of our county, but also across the state. So all the different counties and municipalities have to develop and adopt a property rights element. If they fail to do so in a timely manner, there is a penalty imposed, which is delaying the processing and approval of other privately and publicly initiated plan amendments that were begun or initiated after July 1st of this year. If I could have the next slide. So the first version that we developed for you that went to our first workshop together complies with the minimum requirements of House Bill 59, and this language you see in front of you now is the core of that element, and it comes verbatim out of House Bill 59. We developed it in consultation with the Florida Department of Economic Opportunity. It doesn't go any further than that, but does meet the requirements for that legislation to ensure that there are no delays in processing other plan amendments. There is nothing that precludes us at a later date going back and modifying this and bringing in other issues that we feel are important to the protection of private property rights, but this is the minimum requirements that we sought to ensure compliance with this first version. If I could have another, next slide. We did take this to the Planning Commission on August 24th, and they did find it consistent with your Future of Hillsborough Conference Plan for unincorporated Hillsborough County. With that, if I could have the next slide. We did go to a workshop with you, and you expressed an interest in developing an alternative version based on a model element provided by the Thousand Friends of Florida. We have done so and had a workshop with you on that. I will note that we have made some minor edits to that since that workshop, based on suggestions provided by the Board of County Commissioners itself, county staff, and also updates provided by the Thousand Friends of Florida to their model element. I would characterize all these as very minor edits and wordsmithing. Next slide. So just to break down how the Thousand Friends of Florida version differs from the previous version that we developed, it's broken down into three sections. The first section, which relates to Goal 1, Objective 1, and Policies 1.1 to 1.4, identifies the specific property rights which will be respected in Hillsborough County. I will say that this section is very similar to the language that is in the previous version and coming straight out of House Bill 59. So this section in itself meets the compliance requirements for that legislation, and as I noted, similar to the previous version. If I could have the next slide. However, this version goes a little bit further, and the next section, Objective 2 and Policies 2.1 to 2.4, identifies the rights of people to participate in the decisions that affect their lives and property. In particular, this language and these issues have been addressed, for the most part, already in our Plan Amendment Procedures Manual and also in our Land Development Code, but there seem to be an interest for the Board of County Commissioners to codify these within your Comprehensive Plan. If I could have the next slide. So to give you a little bit of idea of what things would be affected by this, it would impact plan amendments and zonings. There are other decisions that the Board of County Commissioners take related to development orders, variances, and the like, but it was felt that these are not as far-reaching as plan amendments and rezonings, and they could be addressed adequately by the procedures that are already in your Land Development Code. We also looked at the model, and they noted that those who should participate are defined as effective persons. We felt that this was too narrow, so we broadened it to interested parties. We don't feel that necessarily that people should be excluded from speaking if they live further distance from a plan amendment than would be allowed, would be considered an effective person. People, you know, drive to other areas, they work in other areas, and we, of course, want to encourage as much public participation as possible, so that's why we broadened that language that was provided by the Thousand Friends of Florida. The model element did have some language concerning the speaking opportunities for individuals and the applicant and staff. We felt that it was more important to modify that language, to allow for discretion on behalf of either the Hillsborough County Planning Commission or the Board of County Commissioners, to ensure that everyone has the opportunity to speak and participate on obviously some very potentially controversial issues. So we did make the language change to offer that discretion to each of those boards. If I could have the next slide. We did establish a link concerning the notice or requirements that are already in your Procedures Manual and your Land Development Code with the Comprehensive Plan, so that is a clear link between those documents now. The model element did not note other ways to encourage public participation, such thing as signage, legal advertisements, postings on websites. So we included those additional mechanisms that we can garner public participation. There was some language in this section concerning pre-application meetings. Of course, I've been involved with a lot of pre-application meetings in my career, and they tend to be somewhat dry affairs in the sense that, you know, we're going over timelines or permitting fees and things of that nature, and we felt it would be much more productive to require the applicants to hold and engage the adjacent proprietors in a neighborhood meeting, so they had that opportunity and dialogue before they get to the public hearing process with either the Planning Commission or Board of County Commissioners. If I could have the next slide. The last section deals with the actual mechanisms of how you make those decisions. That's Objective 3 and Policies 3.1 to 3.3. If I could have the next slide. And this notes that votes for plan amendments need a majority plus one, and for zonings, four affirmative votes. I will note that concerning plan amendments, this language comes out of the model element, but I will note that it is a little bit different than the way you operate currently, particularly as it relates to text amendments. As my understanding, when you have a text amendment that increases intensity or density, that requires a majority plus one, but text amendments that don't affect those densities or intensities require a simple majority. If this was enacted, then all text amendments would require that majority plus one. And finally, there was some language that has been included that ensures that if materials are submitted for the consideration of the Board of County Commissioners or the Planning Commission, that there's adequate time for both proponents and opponents to react to that material and be familiar with it before it becomes up for a decision by either of those boards. If I could have the next slide. We did present this version to the Planning Commission October 4th. They found it inconsistent with your Comprehensive Plan, and I'll just leave this language up here. This is verbatim from the language that they provided us during that public hearing. While you look at that, I will note that at that public hearing, we had four members of the public speak and oppose this version of the property rights element. We've also, and I hope these have been able to be transmitted to you, we've had two emails since that time that also oppose this version from a Mr. Clay Brickemar and a Ms. Michelle Williamson. And I would conclude with, this morning, I reached out to the Florida Department of Economic Opportunity, and I inquired about other jurisdictions that have submitted this version of the plan amendment based on the Thousand Friends of Florida model, and there were two that they identified to me. Of course, they were not verbatim with the model, but neither is the one that's being presented to you today. They are the City of Stewart and the City of Webster, and both of those have been found in compliance with House Bill 59. If I could have the next slide. And finally, we're here again to get your direction on which version of this you wish to transmit to the Florida Department of Economic Opportunity for their review, and then we will bring that back to you on December 9th for your consideration of adoption. And with that, I stand for any questions.
Thank you. And with that, I guess we have a public hearing at this time, and do we have anyone that's signed up to speak at public hearing? We do, okay. I didn't get any names, so maybe someone could advise me.
Yes, Madam Chair, we do have a list of public speakers who are wishing to speak tonight.
Okay, thank you. Who's first on the list?
Stephen Berryhill.
Stephen Berryhill, okay.
Stephen, if not on the line, the speaker looking to speak on Item A1 is Jennifer Mottzinger.
Okay, thank you. So Stephen's not there. Clarin O'Dowery.
She has not checked in.
Travis Council.
Travis has not checked in as well.
Maria Kraus.
Maria has not checked in.
Jennifer Mottzinger.
Well, good evening, Commissioners, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Great. My name is Jennifer Mottzinger, and I'm with the Tampa Bay Builders Association. My job is to advocate for the home building industry in Pasco, Pinellas, and Hillsborough Counties, and I'm proud to share that with over 1,200 members, we are the largest organization of our type in the state of Florida. As a body, you have expressed a lot of disappointment and frustration with much of how Hillsborough County has grown over the last 50 years, but now you're in the driver's seat, and you have been for the last few years, and you're making a lot of changes. You're changing almost every element in the comp plan. You're changing the technical manuals, you're changing the LDC, and you're also changing criteria for school sites. But as you make these changes, there are a lot of unintended consequences. There are no schools being built right now. There are no homes or anything else being built in the areas where we have a moratorium going on, and most of my members have stopped investing in this county because of the millions of dollars they've already invested that has been lost, and they also feel very uncomfortable with the lack of transparency, the constant changes in the policy and processes and all that. And so our industries always ask for just two things, predictability and transparency. And out of the 67 counties, we are the only major jurisdiction that's considering this special interest group of the Thousand Friends of Florida's version of the private property rights element this evening. The model language that was originally submitted to you was written by the Department of Economic Opportunity, the Association of Counties, and the League of Cities. And the legislators that wrote this element, they're still in office, and they know exactly what their intent was. So just like any other situation where local government and state statute are contradictory, I'm sure there are going to be bills next session to further clarify their intent, especially if stuff like this moves forward. This element was not on my radar screen, but I did get a chance to better understand the genesis, and that was to codify the Burt Harris lawsuit on private property rights. And this language, again, it has a lot of unintended consequences, and I'm sure that's why your own planning commission found it inconsistent. And I do think that the planning professionals worked as best they could to provide you with some balance. However, my opinion is why not just adopt the model language that no will be in compliance, avoid another round of food fights with your own legislators, and perhaps others at the end of the day, not sure. But I don't know what the goal is on this particular proposal, because I don't feel like there's a lack of engagement or transparency on controversial issues as far as people participating go. Policy, process, yes, but not on the engagement piece. I do hope you decide to support the original model language, and I do appreciate your consideration of our position.
Thank you, your time is up, thank you. And next, we have Stephen Berryhill. Stephen Berryhill.
Madam Chair, the next speaker would be Nicole.
Oh, I'm sorry, I've got, I don't know why, Jacob Kramer.
Madam Chair, the next speaker for this item would be Nicole Newbauer.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Newbauer.
Good evening. Yes, Madam Chair, I'm here, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Good evening. My name is Nicole Newbauer, and I'm a land use attorney here in Tampa. I am here tonight to ask these carefully review the proposed property rights element and evaluate its consistency with the intent of House Bill 59. House Bill 59 states that the legislative intent was for governmental entities to respect judicially acknowledged and constitutionally protected private property rights. The legislature required a property rights element to ensure that private property rights are considered in local decision-making. There seems to be a disconnect between the intent of House Bill 59 and the proposed property rights element. While the small handful of property owner protections were added, procedural protections for people other than property owners have also been included. These procedural protections namely include a supermajority requirement. This, although it may seem like a minor change, will have major ramifications for the industry. We do not think that it is appropriate to adopt a supermajority requirement in a Comprehensive Plan Amendment that is intended to protect private property rights. It is not appropriate to pass these under this kind of umbrella. With that, I respectfully request that you either find the proposed property rights element inconsistent as written, or adopt only the model property rights element proposed by the legislature. Also, I do want to let you know that Jacob Kramer was supposed to be in attendance tonight, however, he is at Tampa City Council in a meeting that has gone far longer than anticipated, and he apologizes for being absent. Thank you.
Thank you. And finally, we have David Parker.
David Parker has not checked in.
Okay, so I'm going to close the public hearing, as I understand, there's no one else on this CPA?
Yes, Madam Chair, there's no one else left to speak on Item A1.
Great, so I'll close the public hearing.
CPA 21-20.
Thank you. And move to board discussion at this time. And Commissioner Smith, you're recognized.
Yes, well, a few things in response to some of the public comments. The Thousand Friends version with their recommendations, that has the state recommended language and then adds other language that does not reduce property rights. In fact, it adds property rights. It adds the property rights of other people who might be affected besides the one landowner in any land use changes. And, you know, I think it's very important that we respect the property rights of everyone that maybe have an interest in land use changes. So I'm hoping we can pass the version with the Thousand Friends, and I'll make that motion in a minute, but I want to clear up a couple of other things. The Planning Commission staff found the Thousand Friends version consistent. The planning commissioners that are appointed by the various jurisdictions and include people appointed by other agencies, they had a split vote. The majority did find it inconsistent, but they were not unanimous on that. And it's my understanding, and, you know, somebody can correct me if I'm wrong, but it's my understanding from staff, my discussions with staff, that the main reason in their conversation, that some of them found it inconsistent, was that they had concerns that it was no longer consistent with the state, or that it wouldn't be accepted by the DEO. But turns out that now, as other jurisdictions are submitting that version with that language, they are being accepted by the state. The state is not, the DEO is not having any problem with it, and they are found in compliance with the state, the new state regulation by the state body. So, you know, I just, I think our Planning Commission staff has done a really good job of the minor wordsmithing and making sure that it also addresses Hillsborough County's concerns. As for the majority plus one for any comp, any comp plan changes, currently, a lot of our comp plan changes require a supermajority vote, and well, they should, because our Comprehensive Plan is like our Constitution. It is a 20-year planning horizon that lays out basics of plans. It should not be nibbled away frivolously, so it should require a thoughtful supermajority vote, and in fact, most amendments do. The only change here is that, a few more, maybe I'll ask staff to explain which ones are being added to that batch. Johanna?
Currently, the Board's policy provides that any comp plan amendment that changes future land use designation and the future land use element, or that changes residential density on a parcel or parcels of land comprising less than 5% of unincorporated Hillsborough, shall be adopted by a majority plus one vote. This change would just extend that to all Comprehensive Plan amendments, including text amendments.
And most of the text amendments are not privately generated anyway. That's not, often that's not one landowner thing, so it just makes it more consistent that it's always a majority plus one to change this plan. So I'm hoping that we can pass the version with the Thousand Friends recommendation, and so I will make that motion.
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Smith, seconded by Commissioner Overman to pass the Thousand Friends of Florida. Commissioner Cohen, you're recognized.
Thank you. So most of the objection that I read today, Commissioner Smith talked about this, was the sense that somehow the Thousand Friends version is so broad that it would, so broadly beyond what the legislature wrote, that it would somehow either get knocked out or invalidate this and bring everything to a halt. And my question, and this may be for the Planning Commission, is, isn't, by transmitting this, don't we give the Office of Economic Opportunity an opportunity to basically tell us whether this passes muster or not? I mean, I understand what they've done with the other towns that have done it, but, I mean, isn't that basically what's going to happen if we transmit?
I can respond, I would say that is true. That we will transmit the version to them, they will have the opportunity to comment, and we will react to their comments.
Okay, so if there's something in here that somehow is offensive to the original intent, there's going to be an opportunity for that to be identified. The second thing I would just say is that I don't think what's in the model is particularly radical. It's really, I think, may result in a few more people being able to come to public comment, but that's really the only major change that I even see occurring as a result of this. And, you know, my view is that our job is to evaluate the public comment, and if people live far away or aren't engaged in the community that are speaking, it's up to us to ferret that out and hear that. So I'm not, I think we should transmit it and see how it comes back. And my understanding is that if it comes back with comments from the Office of Economic Opportunity, we can address those and we could make changes at the time of the final adoption. Is that right?
That is my understanding of the process, yes. You would have the opportunity to press any comments they have at the adoption hearing.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, and you're finished, and I don't know if, I don't see any other Commissioners to speak, and I'm supporting this. I think that it, the comments are so well-taken, Commissioner Smith and Commissioner Cohen, as regards this, I think, and I... Cohen, as regards this, I think, and I, you know, 1,000 Friends of Florida has done a great job looking at, across the state, at issues with regards to this. And so, yes, I don't think it is very radical. It just adds a little more protections, as Commissioner Smith said, for some of the people that wouldn't be recognized in the initial version. It's more comprehensive, and I feel very comfortable with it. So I'll be supporting it. Seeing no further comments, can you please do a roll call vote?
Chair Kemp?
Yes.
Cohen?
Yes.
Hagan?
No.
Myers?
Yes.
Overman?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Motion carried, five to one. Commissioner Hagan voted no.
Thank you.
And just for the record, that was action on 2120B, CPA, that incorporated the 1,000 Friends model language.
That is correct.
Okay, then we will, at this time, move on to CPA 1909. Is that correct? Ms. Leinhardt, I guess?
Yes, ma'am, the next item.
Todd Pressman, may I interrupt, please? Point of order.
No, you may not. You're not recognized. No, you may not interrupt. You are not to speak.
Thank you very much. I was going to wait for a continuance.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The next item on the agenda, item B1, is HCCPA 1909, and Mr. Tony Garcia will be presenting this item. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Leinhardt. Tony Garcia, Planning Commission staff. HCV, if you'd be so kind as to bring up my presentation for HCCPA 1909. Thank you. HCCPA 1909 is located in the general vicinity of the northwest intersection of Boy Scout Road and Grove Lane. Next slide, please. The site is located in the Keystone Odessa area, in the northwest Hillsborough part of Hillsborough County, in the rural service area, and is located with, it is part of the boundaries of the Keystone Odessa Community Plan. Next slide, please. This is a privately initiated map amendment. It is approximately 5.1 acres in size. As you can see from the aerial here, most of the properties in the surrounding area are mostly large lot, single-family homes, or primarily rural in character. There are some environmental areas that one can see, and quite a few lakes. There are some smaller residential enclaves to the south and east of the site that were able to be developed prior to the development of the actual Keystone Community Plan, which was adopted in 2001. Next slide, please. Here is a depiction of the future land uses in this particular area. The predominant land use is agricultural rural 1 to 5, which is actually what the site is currently, the site in question. To the south, you have some agricultural estate, which is 1 to 2 and 1/2 acres. There is a smattering of residential 1 further to the east and to the south of the area, and there are also areas designated as natural preservation. Next slide, please. The request is to go from agricultural rural to agricultural estate 1 to 2 and 1/2. Next slide, please. Here are a few of the illustrations of depicting the site itself and the character of the surrounding area. This is the subject site. Next slide, please. Same location, just a different perspective, looking to the north. Next slide, please. Here are some of the units that are proximate to the site that interface the site, so non-residential use across the street. Next slide, please. And again, this is the, one of the enclaves further to the south of the site. Next slide, please. And this is also another non-residential use that interfaces the site to the east. Next slide, please. Some of the, one of the impacts regarding this particular 5.1 acre site, the adopted future land use is AR 1 to 5. The request is to go to AE 1 to 2 and 1/2. The non-residential potential is 40,000 square feet or a .25 floor area ratio, whichever is less intense. At the 1 to 2 and 1/2, it would be 20,000 square feet or a .25, actually a reduction in FAR potential. As a standard, you would normally, under the AR 1 to 5, have one dwelling unit, because it is AR 1 to 5. Under the AE, you would be able to potentially, since it is 5.1 acres, get two dwelling units. However, that's not the case in this particular situation. This particular site has wetlands on the site that reduce the uplands to under 5 acres. So technically, this particular site cannot be, cannot be developed for one residential unit under the AR 1 to 5, which is because the wetlands density credit is not applicable in the Keystone Odessa Community Plan. That being the case, the applicant had no other recourse in their quest to try and be able to develop the site to put one residential dwelling unit on the site than to come in and request a plan amendment to go to agricultural estate at 1 to 2 and 1/2. Next slide, please. Regarding consistency with the comprehensive plan, specifically future land use element, within the future land use element, the objective for the rural area general character, specifically Policy 4.1, views that standard density in the rural service area should be maintained at no less than agricultural rural 1 to 5 acres, one unit to 5 acres. Moreover, in the livable communities element, specifically the Keystone Odessa Community Plan, the Keystone Community Plan specifically discourages plan amendments to densities higher than 1 dwelling unit for 5 gross acres, and no density credits will be assigned to wetland areas for new development, as I've already explained to you in the prior slides. Next slide, please. Based on that, Planning Commission, the Planning Commission on October 4th, 2021, found HCCPA 1909 inconsistent with the future of Hillsborough Comprehensive Plan, which was staff's recommendation, and is forwarding this recommendation to you this evening as the body of the Board of County Commissioners for your consideration. That concludes my presentation, and I'll be available for any questions at the conclusion of either my presentation or the applicant's presentation or public comment, whatever your desire is, Board. Thank you.
Thank you. And with that, we will move to the applicant. The applicant has three minutes per each applicant representative. Is the applicant present? You're muted.
Go ahead, Mr. Pressman. We unmuted you.
Okay.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I apologize for interruption. I was trying to come forward, request a continuance. With one member missing, and a vote required of five, the applicant would like to, with respect, ask the commissioners if they would please consider a continuance.
Well, I don't think we're required to consider a continuance with, I'll just ask Ms. Lundgren.
With six members in attendance, which Commissioner Hagan is remote, then you're not required to continue this application as a right. It's really the board's pleasure as to whether you'd like to continue.
Okay, and I guess there's, you know, there's been this request. I don't know if any, doesn't look like any commissioner here is, wants to make that.
I move to continue.
Yeah, I'll second.
Okay, we do have a motion to continue by Commissioner Cohen, and seconded by Commissioner Myers. And Commissioner Smith, you're recognized.
Yes, I'll support the motion for a continuance, but we do have some members of the community who showed up to speak, and being that we're continuing this at the last minute, Ms. Lundgren, would it be appropriate to hear from the community while they're here, or just send everybody home, or?
It's, it's really the board's discretion whether you'd like to continue now, if you're going to continue, or if you'd like to hear from the public in the public hearing.
How many people on the list?
Six.
I think only three of them are here.
I'd be happy to hear from them, if that's the pleasure of the board.
I'd be happy to hear from them, since they're here.
I would too, and that's what I always find about continuances, that, and I looked to see right away, because I just, when a lot of public show up, even more particularly when they come into this room, as they have in the past, and, you know, make that effort. So with that, I guess we'll take a, if we could do a roll call vote for a continuance, but we will hear the public that is on the line at this time. Does that mean applicant, and we'll hear from the applicant as well, and then the?
Just for procedural purposes, I think it would be best to hold the vote for the continuance until after the public hearing occurs. So even if the board's intending to continue, that you take that action after the public hearing, because otherwise, the item isn't properly before the board for the public hearing.
Right. Okay, okay, so that's, it looks like that's what we will do by, I don't hear anybody objecting to that at this point. So what we'll do is, we'll move with the applicant speaking and applicant's representatives, and we'll hear from the public that is present. We'll go through the hearing, and then we'll take the vote, the motion stays right now, to continue this hearing.
Madam Chair, I'm sorry, I'm confused. So you're going to take a vote for continuance after the public hearing, but?
After, after we hear from the applicant, we're going to let the public that are present speak, but we won't take a vote on this tonight, or at least we'll take a vote on a continuance after we hear from everyone. And it sounds like that's the pleasure of the board to do that continuance, but to hear those who have made the effort to be present tonight. So we'd ask that you and anyone else representing the applicant speak at this time, and, you know, we'll hear from, the public will go through, and, and then we, you know, we will hold and, I believe, vote to continue.
Do we have surety on the continuance?
I'm sorry?
I don't believe that we have surety on the continuance until the vote is taken. And I, with all due respect, and I do mean all due respect, I think it would be extremely difficult for the county commission to take a vote on this in December, January, until there's a full board trying to recall comments from the public from two months ago.
Well, I think we might even, if we have to, we'd open it up for public comments at that time, but this is what the pleasure of the board is. You've requested the continuance, and we're trying to do this with fairness to everyone.
Madam Chair, maybe, maybe this is the issue. I think we definitely want to hear from the people in the public that are here tonight. Maybe the applicant, whether the applicant presents their case or not tonight is sort of a separate question.
Well, yes. I know, but I think that we want to give the applicant the opportunity to do that. I think that's what Ms. Lundgren said, right? I mean, we wouldn't want to not have the applicant. You have the opportunity to present tonight if you want to. If you don't want to, correct? So you could waive your opportunity to present, but we will hear from the public.
I appreciate your deference, and I appreciate your patience. We will not present tonight. We'll present when the public hearing is heard in the future, when the board of county commissioners will vote on the issue. Thank you.
Okay, at this time, then, the applicant waives her opportunity to speak at this time, and so we'll move to the public hearing. We'll hear from those present at the, this, that have come tonight. So I don't know who's on, who's available, but Barbara Aderhold? Is Ms. Aderhold there?
Madam Chair, Barbara Aderhold is on the line. Aderhold, can you hear us?
Wait a minute, can you hear me now?
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay, this is crazy. I've got to tell you, okay, Barbara Aderhold, P.O. Box 272879, Tampa, Florida. This is a last-minute attempt to try a new switch on this. This thing is against the Keystone Odessa Community Plan. I don't know what else they can do to change it, except that they don't have a supermajority vote. This is something I have never had to deal with before. I disagree with the continuance. I think we should go forward with it, or end the public, end the whole thing and move it to another date. I think this is very inconvenient for all the citizens that have signed on, come down, and to do this at the last minute is not something that really sets well with the community. And I would really request that you not set this thing forward. This is against the Keystone Odessa Community Plan. It's not going to change, no matter what they do. Sorry, I'm just a little upset by this maneuvering at the last minute, and I appreciate you letting me able to speak. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Tom Aderhold?
Tom is present, Tom Aderhold, 5215 Wilcox Road. I assume everyone can hear me okay?
Yes.
Thank you. I really object, as a point of order, to only taking the opposition testimony and not the applicant's. The applicant will now have, if we, if the opposition testifies against this application tonight, the applicant then has the ability to rebut us and prepare for their presentation when the actual hearing is held. So I'd like to put that on the record as a legitimate legal problem with proceeding. Now, with that said, Ms. Lundgren, I do hope you opine on that position, and I'll pause slightly for you to, if you choose to.
What we'll do is take any public comments that we have at this time, and then we'll, we can discuss what you've stated, Mr. Aderhold. Is there anything else that you?
Yes, ma'am, it is. I have personally participated in the development on task force of three different community plans. Those are Keystone, Carrollwood, Orient, East Lake and Orient Road. All those community founding fathers spent many, many months developing the character and nature of their plans. They are potent, they meet the aspirations and planning of those communities and their founding fathers. Keystone is one of the first, if not the first, to be adopted. It kind of set a standard or a bar for all others. If this one, if you might view, and the applicant's representative will tell you that this is just a one little dinky piece of dirt and is not meaningful, well, do not, that's a straw dog. Do not buy into that. Because it's a domino effect, you've heard that many times, precedent will be set if this was approved, without a shadow of a doubt. And the applicant's representative understands that, and he's going to tell you that, it won't make any difference because it's a little piece of dirt. Well, it's far more than that. You are going to violate our community plan. Every other community plan in the county will be subject to the same sort of nonsensical invasion. Please don't let it be pierced. And I'll reserve other factual comments for the real hearing coming up, and whenever time it's scheduled. And thank you very much. I rest.
Thank you very much. I heard there were three people, I'm not sure, I'll keep going through this list. Stephen Berryhill?
Madam Chair, Stephen has not checked in.
Okay. Clarin O'Dowerty?
Clarin has not checked in. David has not checked in. Our speaker would be Jansey.
Jansey Mansung-Hing.
Good evening, honorable Hillsborough County Commissioners. My name is Jansey Mansung-Hing, 16740 Orley Road, Lutz, Florida. My husband and I are retired from law enforcement. After 22 years of service, we retired and served so that we can invest our retirement in a beautiful area of Keystone, Florida, on a small ranch to live peacefully with our horses in an area protected by a community plan that would not let small nor neighbors build right next door on top of us. I am opposed to this plan amendment and support your staff's recommendation of being inconsistent with the comprehensive plan. I'm not opposed to one home. I'm opposed to changing the land use designation. This would be an increase in density and pierce our community plan. You might say this is okay, it's only one house, but it does much more than that. Again, it pierces our community plan. And what do you say to the next applicant that wants to change the land use for increasing density? So how can you give this to one applicant? So how can you give this to one applicant if you cannot give it to the next? The Keystone Odessa Community Plan was adopted in 2001. This applicant purchased this property in 2004, according to the property appraiser's website. This is three years after the plan was adopted. There were known wetlands on the property. The applicant did not do his proper due diligence in researching the use of this property. I do not think the Keystone Odessa Community Plan and the community should suffer for such a lack of due diligence by this applicant, so I'd ask that you please consider this plan amendment to the president and would forever change the fate of our community. Please consider that it pierces our community plan and do not approve this plan amendment. I am also a member of the Keystone Civic Association and serve as a board of director. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. At this time, since the applicant didn't speak in the first place, then, you know, I just, we'll just move on to board comment. Commissioner Smith, you're recognized.
Yes, thank you. And I understand the citizens' frustrations with a continuance and, and I guess I was trying to, you know, in suggesting that we hear the citizens that were here, tried to, you know, show that, some courtesy to the citizens who had come to give them the opportunity to speak. I understand Mr. Aderhold's point that, you know, doing that absent the entire hearing has its pluses and minuses, but I just thought it was better than sending everybody home after, after they'd showed up and, and at least give people the opportunity. And as for, you know, not, not remembering, you know, just in case one of y'all can't show up at the future hearing, I have written notes of what you've said and I think I'm seeing nodding, saying that the rest of the commissioners also have, have heard your, your comments and, and frankly, we've gotten a lot of those similar comments in writing before this. So, you know, I just hope that you understand we're in kind of a difficult situation trying to be fair to everybody.
Okay, I see no further discussion. We have a motion by Commissioner Cohen, seconded by Commissioner Myers. I just hope, I think it's a new thing, but I hope...
It's the other way around.
Oh, I'm sorry. We had a motion by Commissioner Myers, seconded by Commissioner Cohen, sorry. I just, I think experience shows us that, what, Ms. Lundgren, you wanted to?
I was just referring to the motion. It's fine.
Okay, thank you. I, I just think it, we saw tonight how awkward and how, I think it's, whenever we do this to postpone something like this, there's a right, if there's only five commissioners, but when there's six, there's no right to do that. And I don't, I think it's not a really, a policy, as you can see, that can get into just what we got into tonight in any form that we try to take to make it more fair or reasonable. So, you know, just when we have someone that makes that request at the very last minute, it's, unless there's a reason for that, it's, it's probably puts us in a really difficult position to, to ever do that and puts others in a difficult position. But we're, we're where we are now. Motion by Commissioner Myers, seconded by Commissioner Cohen, seeing no further discussion. Please, and this is a motion for continuance to, what date is it?
I would ask the Planning Commission staff who's on the line what date they would recommend for this continuance.
Commissioners, Tony Garcia, Planning Commission staff, you would have two dates that you could choose from. We have two dates open in December, either December the 9th or December the 16th at 6:00 P.M. One of the two.
I prefer December the 9th.
It's fine, let's...
Okay, so December the 9th. Okay.
The other one is the 16th.
The first one we deferred was the 16th, December 16th.
The first one.
The very first one.
Yeah, but he just gave me a choice, so I picked the earlier one.
So we can come back twice in December, that's all I'm pointing out.
Yeah.
You come back and we choose the 9th.
I think we are anyway.
Yeah.
Yeah, there's going to be, there are two here, there are two hearings scheduled for December regardless, so...
Mm-hmm, yeah. Okay. So seeing no further discussion of this very discussed topic, can you please do a roll call vote?
Chair Kim?
Yes.
Cohen?
Yes.
Hagan?
No.
Myers?
Yes.
Overman?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Thank you, motion carried, five to one. Commissioner Hagan voted no.
Okay, and let's move to our, our next item here, CPA 21-15 Pine Key Island.
Yes, ma'am.
And Ms. Leinhart?
Yes, ma'am, thank you. The final item on the agenda is HCCPA 21-15. Ms. Nika Mills will be presenting this item. Thank you.
Good evening, Commissioners, Nika Mills, Planning Commission staff. I'm here to present HCCPA 21-15 Pine Key Island. Within this round of plan amendments, this is your southernmost application located near the Apollo Beach area. This is a privately initiated plan amendment, approximately nine acres located within the Tampa Bay. The site is located within the coastal high hazard area and the site is currently without a future land use designation. The site is neither located within the urban service area or the rural area. Here is an aerial of the site. As you can see, the island has eroded over time. The peak outline once consisted of uplands. The application request before you this evening will only apply to the nine acre upland portion of the site. Again, the site is currently without future land use designation, which is the main purpose for the applicant's request before you this evening. The applicant is seeking the public, quasi-public future land use designation. The applicant's justification for seeking the public, quasi-public future land use designation is to continue to use the property as a recreational boating destination. Here is an image of the interior of the site. This is the upland portion of the site. And this photo is indicative of some of the uses that occur on the site today. Beach volleyball, there's a water slide activity on the site, camping currently goes on, on the site. Currently, the site has no development potential. If the site were to be approved for the public quasi-public future land use classification, there would still be no potential for density or residential on the site. As for non-residential uses, they would be guided by the surrounding future land use designations, and this poses a challenge, being that the nearest future land use designations are approximately two miles away within the Apollo Beach area. These designations consist of a residential six, office commercial twenty, heavy industrial and natural preservation. Allowing that type of intensity would be too intense on the site, with the exception of the natural preservation, future land use. As for agency comments, there were no objections received from any of the reviewing agencies. Fire rescue, no objection. Public Utilities Administration did comment that the site falls outside of the urban service area and that county wastewater service will not be available for the sites. The proposed future land use designation change to public quasi-public is inconsistent with the following goals, objectives and policies. Within the future land use element, Policy 8.1 speaks to each future land use category having a range of potentially permissible uses and that not all those potential uses are routinely acceptable anywhere within that future land use category. The request is also inconsistent with Policy 6.7 of the coastal management element. Policy 6.7 states to limit development within coastal waterfront properties to uses that are water-dependent, water-enhanced, water-related, or further deport activity master plan and limit public infrastructure. Objective 10 of the future land use element speaks to not issuing development orders for a site unless development is suitable for the physical conditions of the land, keeping in mind topographical and soil conditions and that the development must mitigate adverse impacts that it creates. Additionally, there is a goal at the beginning of the future land use element that speaks to ensuring that the character and location of land uses optimize the economic benefit and the enjoyment and protection of natural resources while minimizing the threat to health, safety and welfare posed by hazard, nuisance, incompatible land uses and environmental The Planning Commission, at their October 4th board meeting, found HCCPA 21-15 inconsistent with the goals, objectives and policies of the future Hillsborough Comprehensive Plan and recommended forwarding this recommendation to the board of county commissioners. Additionally, with this recommendation, the Planning Commission urged the BACC to direct Planning Commission staff to develop a new land use category that would be suitable for uses that could be considered for the site and similar properties. This concludes my presentation. I'd be happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you. And with that, we'll move on to the applicant. Three minutes for each applicant representative. Is the applicant present? I think the applicant or someone representing may be talking, but they're not...
They may be muted.
They're muted.
I'm sorry, okay, yes, this is Peggy Matthews, and I was under the impression that I had 15 minutes for a presentation, as I did in the public planning commission, and if not, I'd like to have all the time from the other owners of the island so I can get to my presentation, because this was not communicated to me that I only had three minutes. I thought I had time to present.
Well, who are, who are the other people that are present right now?
Okay, we have Cole Weaver, we have Jonathan McHenry, we have James Wester, Russ Loomis, and John Glad, and I'd like to take all their time, if this is how it was supposed to be, because this was not communicated.
Okay.
This is the same presentation I presented in front of the public, in the planning council.
Well, then I guess you can take all their time...
It is not long, but it's longer than three minutes.
And they won't have an opportunity to speak then.
That's fine.
Okay.
Okay, Peggy Matthews, I'm, I'm an owner, also a marine biologist, and I do the environmental and government relations. Can I have my presentation started, please? Okay, Pine Key has been stated, it's been a historical recreation boating destination for the Tampa Bay area and the transient boaters that pass this area. Okay, this is a privately owned island. It is the only privately owned island in Hillsborough County. The other islands out there are owned by the port, by Audubon or a government entity. This is the only private island in Hillsborough County. Okay, the county did not assign this as a land use designation initial. That's why we are here. We're not here because of anything that we want to change. We're here because we've been told we had to do this. The historical use of boating, our recreation, is the current and proposed use for the future. We had several land use attorneys involved in this. They have, they have recommended the public quasi-public. They are familiar with the island and the uses on the island because it, it goes with the private establishments for public use, recreational services and tourist attractions. We have people from all over. Community recreation is very important and private establishments are always open to the public. Next, please. Give you some history of the island. The island first showed up in 1943 as a shoal, and then it has naturally accreted and also grown due to dredge material. It's been in private ownership since World War II. Okay, the Tampa Boatyard, that repaired military vessels needed a place to, to more vessels while they were waiting for repair. They bought it from the state. Next slide. This is an extremely high-energy shoreline system. It's in the middle of the bay. There are no nesting birds, there are no nesting sea turtles, and there's no nesting seagrass, and we've had seagrass assessments performed by ESA that shows this. We're only 75 yards from the ship channel, as you can tell, and we have massive waves pounding that island constantly. It is not a sensitive environment at all. Okay, one of the categories was natural preservation, as highlighted here. The, the main criteria was it to be a lands of significant environmental importance, and this, this island is just held together, is sand held together by Australian pines. It is not a naturally sensitive environment. The Big Ben Ship Channel, this is not, to show you the constant erosion that, that is still consisting, persisting today, just within a matter of a few months from the, the completion of the Big Ben Channel, the island eroded immensely and it's continuing today. We have, this is an example of what we're trying to do out on the island. Environmental Sciences did Apollo Beach on the left, was it before the living shoreline was put in, and on the right is it as it is today, and well, as of 2017, it's probably bigger even now. And this is what we're trying to do to save the island by implementing a living shoreline. This is a proposed site plan to give you some idea of exactly the passive type of uses that are going to be on the island. There's not going to be any homes or, or any major construction out there. It's basically areas that can host certain events. Okay, the current and proposed uses, as been stated in the previous speaker, one of the ways we monitor capacity, camping and so forth, is by reservations and ticketing events with people with wristbands. Wristbands, and that's how we limit, monitor visitors to the, to events on the island. MacDill, we do a lot of community involvement. MacDill uses the island for, for ops all the time. They just did one this, this month. We also partner with Tampa Bay Estuary Program, Tampa Bay Watch and Tampa Bay Water Keepers for the coastal cleanup. Services, there's no physical impact to the county. The county does not supply anything to this island, but we do generate revenue for the county. We're powered by generators and solar, and we bring in our own water. We have bought a pump-out boat to service boats around the island and also Apollo Beach. Emergency services are established for any emergency that might come up, and we do provide security on the island. And as I stated, the public quasi-public, our use is fit to community recreation, that's open to the public. I'd like to go through the inconsistent policies that has been stated by the Planning Commission, the future land use. This is the entire text of this Policy 8.1. I'd like to show the highlighted, the functional use and physical composition, and each category has a range of permissible uses that are not exhaustive. We are consistent with this 8.1 future land use policy. Postal... Coastal element, of all the things that we are consistent with, within a high coastal area, preference shall be given to water use enhancement, water related, and water dependent. We are an island. Everything we do is dependent on the bay. We are consistent. The land suitability, the physical conditions is not in it. Topography and soil conditions, everything that we are planning to do that we do there now and are planning to do are goes with what the physical conditions on the island are now, and we are consistent with objective ten. Next. Oh, okay, we've no, excuse me, go back one. I'm sorry, I didn't realize you forwarded it. Okay, and this is the last one, the inconsistent of the goal that was that was identified. This is the actual language that potentials for economic benefit and the enjoyment and the protection of natural resources. We are doing all these things on the island, and we are, that's what we are proposing to do on the island. We are consistent with the goal of the future land use. Public quasi land use designation, we our uses are consistent. We must be assigned the land use designation tonight. The time, we have been years into this. It took years to be determined that we even needed to go through this process. It's been very time consuming, incredibly expensive, and the historical, current, and future use is consistent with public quasi-public. At this time, I'd like for you to recognize Tom Reese with ESA to continue to speak.
Paul, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Hi, again, my name's Tom Reese. Commissioners, I'm working with Pine Key Landowners and coordinating the fourth Tampa Bay staff and facilitating an eight-year-old shoreline protection strategy to protect the island from wave-driven wave energy. We plan to implement a living shoreline feature which will provide a beneficial benefit and increase habitat values and protect the island from wave energy, which are currently repossessing sediments into the water column. Once designed and implemented, this water quality improvement project will provide substrate for essential fish habitats. We're hoping we can help them do this, and that's all I have. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Is anyone else going to continue, or is this?
Yeah, well, I'd like to call on Jonathan McHenry, depending on how much time we have, I guess.
You have five minutes and forty-five seconds.
All right, we'd like to call on Jonathan McHenry and Cole Weaver.
Okay, hi, I'm Jonathan McHenry. I'm one of the owners of the island. I just wanted to say that, you know, I've had the pleasure of talking with most of the commissioners, and I appreciate all of your time. And, you know, what we're looking to do out there is exactly what we've already done out there, and I know that you've gotten quite a few emails on how we've improved the island. It was originally called Beer Can Island as a nickname, and the reason being was because it was littered with beer cans. We took something like nine hundred bags of garbage off of that island and improved the, obviously, the water quality of the bay and everything else. We have a lot of support, and I'm as sure as you've seen in your emails as well that people were reluctant to take their families out there and whatnot, but now they feel comfortable with doing so. And these are generational people that have been coming out there for, you know, two to three generations. We would look, we want to be really a beacon for Tampa Bay at large. There are no other privately owned islands in the bay, and there are no other recreational islands in the bay. We have so many supporters and so many people behind us, and all we're looking to do is to continue what we've already done out there. And as Peggy had stated, we have gone through a tremendous amount of hardship and a tremendous amount of money to get even to where we are today, and we're not even to the zoning process yet. So we want to be a beacon for Tampa Bay, for renewable energy, for everything. We want to give the Tampa Bay community a place that they can go and feel safe at and a place to have events and weddings and things that, you know, are a part of everyday life and a part of everybody's happiness moving forward. And we appreciate your consideration here, and this is literally the only designation that is possible at all. So I just wanted to say that our intentions are completely golden. We have absolutely no intention of doing anything other than providing a great place for your constituents. So thank you.
Thank you. And we had one more person. You have three minutes and four seconds.
All right, thank you very much for your time today. I just wanted to reiterate that we are the only private island. I know there's some concerns about zoning us and that other islands might pop up in the future. That's not going to be an issue with this property because we are a one-off situation. Everything else is owned by the port authority or by county, so there's not going to be, we are clearly a one-off situation when it comes to zoning. Some of the stuff we're going for after zoning is we want to help with some of the shelter issues for people when we come out there. We're looking to build a tiki hut in order to help when storms come by. You know, we have every state license available or that we need to operate currently out there. So, you know, we shouldn't have an issue with what we're currently doing. But we're also just doing what's always been done there before we even bought the island is keeping it a boating destination. We've cleaned up the trash, as John said. We're just trying to make it a family-friendly oriented place for, you know, everybody to come to, whether it's tourists or locals. And, you know, that's about all I have to say. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. And with that, we have one minute and forty-four seconds, so if you're finished up there, we can move on to the public hearing. We have quite a few people signed.
Yes, ma'am, thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. And with that, we will move to public hearing. This is a long list, three minutes per speaker. We'll start with, and I don't know who's present, so you'll have to tell me here, James Schaefer.
I'm here.
I'm sorry, I didn't quite hear that.
Go ahead. Yes, James Schaefer, fourteen oh two, late past run. I am actually a resident of Pasco County. My teenage daughters love to come to the island, and something that you may not have thought of is that I don't own a boat right now, so I come to Apollo Beach and I captain a charter to take us out there. So there's other businesses that are affected as well and other revenues coming in from outside the county. So I also would like to be private, quasi-private designated for this. Thank you.
Thank you. Jonathan McHenry?
I just spoke.
Oh, okay.
Madam Chair, the next available speaker is Shaz Lamere.
Thank you.
Yes, hi, my name's Shaz Lamere, sixty-three, fourteen, Land Review Place, Apollo Beach, Florida. I actually support the public quasi-public land use property designation. I actually don't have anything else to add because Peggy, John, and Cole have already brought up all the key factors. It is a well-known island, and I'm sure I speak for the community on this, and I want to see the island succeed.
Thank you. And you could advise me, but I have Robert Adams. You can just tell me who maybe the next speaker is that's lined up there.
George, I can go ahead.
Yes, Madam Chair, Robert Adams is next.
Okay.
Go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and fellow commissioners. My name's Robert Adams, so I am a local boat captain who takes charters and people out to Beer Can Islands. I also work for a local marine construction company, and through that, I've been able to meet a lot of the new residents that are moving into Apollo Beach. There's hundreds of homes being built. Most of these homes are well over half a million dollars and up, and a large part of them, one of the first things I hear from them is they want me to take them out and show them around the bay and more specifically, the island. So just the thought of having a private island that's open to the public, family-friendly, it's a big appeal for them, and all of them enjoy it and can't wait for us to build their docks so that they can use their own boat and go back time and time again. So I just, I'm also a local homeowner. I live at seven forty-two Grand Cayman on Apollo Beach, so if the zoning did not go through, it would not only affect my business, but I believe it would affect a lot of the new residents that are new to Florida and, more importantly, new to Hillsborough County. So thank you for your time.
Thank you. James King?
Yes, yes, I'm here. Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Thank you, Madam Chair and honorable commissioners. Thank you for allowing me the chance to speak. I am James King. I'm one of the B shareholder operating partners here with Pine Key. I'm here to ask you all to consider allowing us to acquire the public quasi-public zoning. Truly is a zoning that will allow us to keep doing what we have been doing on the island. I personally have witnessed a lot of the feedback from the patrons in the surrounding areas that live there, as well as our law enforcement, about the positive things that have been happening on the island. I, we, our staff is all CPR, AED, and first aid trained, and we do that just so that if we ever, anybody in the area ever needed anything, we are there to help out. I did a little looking into it. The population as of two thousand nineteen in Apollo Beach is twenty thousand nine hundred and forty-seven, and surrounding area Gibsonton as well, population of eighteen thousand five hundred and fifteen, and Ruskin, a population of twenty-five thousand five hundred and thirty, so over sixty thousand people that are in the surrounding area that live on this coastal area. A lot of them are boaters. We are that destination to them that allows them somewhere to come that they can feel safer as they never have before. I hear from them all the time that the island is definitely different than what it used to be. I looked up TripAdvisor, Apollo Beach, Pine Key is number nine on the destination for Apollo Beach. We are rooted in the island, the island's rooted in the area. We would hate to see it taken off that list. We want to consider the public quasi to allow us to do even better. We hope to be number one on that list in the future. So we thank you so much for your consideration and time, and please allow us to keep operating out there. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you. Kevin Pelk?
Kevin, go ahead, can you hear us?
Yes, I'm here.
Go ahead.
Yes, Kevin Pelk, seven four one, Grand Cayman Way. I'm currently in marine construction, basically building docks for the community. Basically, part of my job is to get people boating in the community. This island, a lot of the purpose is for shelter, people having boat issues, a lot of people meet here with concerns. The fact is, is it's part of our community. I mean, I don't know how we would function without it. All our beaches have been taken, you know, the power plant, I mean, that's really the only beach we have that's a preserve area over there. There's really just not a lot of places for us to go here in Apollo Beach. We're basically a community without a beach. So with having Pine Key, it's definitely our place to go. So I, you know, I can't see it being shut down right now. There's just been a lot of good things happening with it. It's definitely changed for six years now. Just after the last couple of years, the garbage all was taken off. It's a clean island. It's not just littered. Basically, there's some organization with the property versus just having basically just a wild party kind of going on. So I bring my kids there a lot, and it's definitely a nice place for them. So for the most part, I'm just hoping that, keep it open, and we can enjoy it, and that's really all I really have to say about it.
Thank you. Lowell Beckner?
Madam Chair, Lowell is not on the line.
Danica Von Muge, Moosh?
You're close. It's Danica Von Mega. So my family and I, we just moved to this part of Florida from Colorado, and I'm a resident of Manatee County, and I am a mother of four kids, and we've been to Pine Key Island several times since we've moved here. Well, I thought that it would just kind of be a fun place to spend the day with friends and family to relax and recharge the batteries, which it definitely is. We've learned it's just so much more than that to our family. It's been a really wonderful place for the community to gather and form relationships and friendships, and as a newbie to the area, it's been a really valuable resource to us to feel connected and grounded here. Now, owners have given us a tour of the island, and I've been very impressed with what wonderful stewards they are to the land. They're constantly working diligently to protect its natural beauty. When friends and family come out to visit us, Pine Key Island is a must-visit place in our area for all the reasons I mentioned, but it also brings people to the local area of Apollo Beach, so which is great for the local economy because we always go for dinner there in Apollo Beach after visiting Pine Key Island. So I fully support the public quasi-public zoning for Pine Key Island, and we hope to be able to use this island for many years to come. Thank you.
Thank you. Craig Mayer?
Yes, I'm here. Thank you, Commissioner. I'm a resident of Apollo Beach, and I'm a minority among the people I, and the people I meet here locally, and I've personally never set foot on Pine Key. I can see it, and I vote passed it, and I love seeing all of the visitors enjoying the island. They're making a time in the near future with grandchildren and such that I will no longer be a stranger to the island, and I'd like to see it preserved for their use. It can be a loud and chaotic place, but it is a wonderful place for residents and visitors alike to gather, and I'd like to see it receive public or quasi-public use designation. Thank you.
Thank you. Dan Castanera?
Dan is not on the line.
Darrell Wheatley?
Yes, good evening, everyone. And for the last five years, we've been taking local people, it started out with local folks that wanted to go out, you know, their parents had gone to Pine Key, and they wanted to go out, they wanted to have a family reunion, a birthday party, whatever. So we would take them out there and spend the day with them and, you know, give them the history of the area. And now, undoubtedly to the ownership group that's involved, it has become a national tourist attraction. I'm not joking. We get people that call from all over the country that are like, come to town, they're going to spend a couple of days at a conference in downtown Tampa, but the one thing they want to do is they want to escape the concrete jungle, and they want to go out to Pine Key. And again, the guys have taken it from what was at one time just an relaxing party-type destination to now being a tourist destination. And also, from a personal standpoint, it's really cool to see the different folks that come out to the island. You know, there, at times, there might be seventy-five, eighty boats out there, all social, economic backgrounds, political parties. No one cares about any of that. They're all out there just to, you know, just to enjoy the island. And with all the tension that's going on in our country right now, it's really a reassuring fact that, you know, when it comes right down to it, we're all in good shape, and these guys deserve to get the public use. They, you know, the comments earlier to start this, you know, complimented everything that needed to be addressed and showed that they went right on it. But again, you know, we're booking trips right now in two thousand twenty-two, the tourists that are coming to town, then they take a tour around town, but they want to go out to Pine Key. They want to see this little oasis in the middle of the jungle. But with that, I hope you guys look favorably upon their request, and thank you for your time, and as always, take care.
Thank you. And we've already heard from Thomas Reese. James Wester?
Mr. Wester, we aren't hearing any of your audio. Uh, we're not hearing anything, Mr. Wester. Madam Chair, Mr. Wester is on the webex, but...
Okay, maybe we should move to the next person and we can just see if we can come back.
Mr. Wester, I was just logging off and logging back on.
Vidal Ramos?
Madam Chair, Vidal Ramos and Christopher Jackson have not checked in.
Okay. Christopher Jackson?
Christopher Jackson has not checked in.
Ryan Cummings?
Hello, Madam Chair and Commissioners, and thank you in advance for hearing my public comments this evening. I am a permanent resident of Hillsborough County and as a member of the community, I'd like my voice to be heard regarding the vote for the proposed future land use of Pine Key Island. I've never spoken at a county board meeting before, however, I felt compelled to speak in this instance because that is just how passionate I am about the public quasi-public land use designation of Pine Key Island. I live on the Hillsborough River in Seminole Heights near Lowry Park and I travel to the island quite, quite frequently. The island is a historical boating destination for Hillsborough County residents. I love to bring my friends and family and out-of-town visitors to the island. Sometimes we go out to Fantasy Island, which is a little bit closer for me, but the beach there is just littered with trash sometimes, which is obviously not ideal. I strongly believe that activities and events should be allowed at the island and I firmly support the island and the public quasi-public use of the island. Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, I believe Mr. Wester has logged back in.
Okay.
Mr. Wester?
Yeah, can you hear me now? I switched over to a different microphone.
Yes, we can hear you clearly.
Okay, thank, thank God for that one. Thank you again for letting me speak today. I actually am one of the owners too. I didn't get to speak earlier. I was actually born and raised in the Tampa Bay area, literally at Tampa General Hospital. My dad, when he retired, was lieutenant at Tampa Airport's Police Department, so he's always instilled in me his family and community. And the way I look at this project and the way I've always looked at it is this is something that is good for not just me and my family, but also everybody in the Tampa Bay area that helps with tourism. And honestly, with the last year and a half with COVID and everything else, it's a necessity with the stress that everybody's been through and we know that going outside and being in nature helps with that. And we take everything from safety very seriously with everything we've implemented from safety protocols and all that, including our bartenders being certified and so on and so forth. So the public quasi-public is definitely what is necessary for us to keep doing what we're doing and I thank you for your time.
Thank you. John Gad?
Madam Chair, the next speaker on the line is Michelle Humbles.
Okay, Michelle Humbles?
I'm here.
Go ahead.
So I just want to say thank you very much for allowing me, thank you for the opportunity for allowing me to be here. I've never been on a call like this myself either. I moved down here from Colorado a couple of years ago and going to Pine Key Island was one of the first things that somebody brought me to and it was a magical experience and I've loved going ever since. I have participated in work-related networking events out there with title companies, lenders, real estate agents and more, gone out there for some of the events that they've thrown on. It's an absolute blast and anytime anyone I know from out of town comes into town, that is the first thing that they want to do. It is an amazing place for people to get outside, enjoy the scenery, enjoy the sun, enjoy nature. And like somebody had said earlier, with a lot of what's going on in this world right now, this is something that we really could use a lot more of, so I am definitely in favor of rezoning it public, quasi-public, please, pretty please. Thank you.
Thank you. Amanda Sutterfield?
Madam Chair, the next available speaker on the line is Patrick Raiford.
Thank you. Patrick Raiford?
Hi, this is Patrick. I live at Apollo Beach at 6513 Solitaire Palm. I'm a local real estate agent and many of the properties I sell are mainly water. And everyone always asks about the island and ultimately, most of my sales have generated volume from a lot of properties. All they talk about is the island. So it definitely would have the impact on the local, if the island wasn't allowed to do what it's been doing. Everyone enjoys the island, I enjoy the island. It's part of just the whole culture of Apollo Beach. It's one of those things that is a secret thing in Apollo Beach, the next thing, of course, I'll say, about in Apollo Beach, have you been out to Pine Key Island? So it's one of those things that is a part of the culture of the, of the area. I definitely recommend for it to continue the doing and the providing of service. Thank you.
Thank you. Stephen Berryhill?
Madam Chair, the last speaker for this item is Cynthia Raiford and she's on the line.
Great, thank you. Cynthia Raiford, you're recognized.
Thank you. My name is Cynthia Raiford and I live in Apollo. I strongly believe that Pine Key Island should be deemed public. I'm the owner of Agua Terrors Brothers, co-owner Liberty Jet Pea Club and South Shore Water Sports. I've also been in the medical field since 2001. Two of the three companies that I have founded the last year during COVID were based solely on supporting mental health. The public needs, wants, desires, and pleads for somewhere to go to get away from everyday life, whether it's fishing, playing, or just a family trip out in the water. Public quasi-public is not just the right thing for the island, but for everyone who comes there to get away from it all. I myself still work in corporate America and coming out to Pine Key is pure therapy and stress-free. It gives you a reset to start again on Monday morning. You actually feel like it's a vacation for the day or just for a couple of hours. Quasi-public is not a title, it is a service to the public. On the island, I witnessed a veteran, W. Empati, be pushed in a wheelchair into the water by his family. He was swimming on his back. I have seen marriage proposal, a marriage proposal, bachelor and bachelorette parties, a celebration of wife scattering their loved ones' remains in the bay. Then come to Pine Key, their tears were of sadness but happy memories for the loved one would have wanted it that way. I have assisted in several medical emergencies, as recently as this past Sunday, when a female was sung by a wasp on her tongue, she was allergic but did not have her EpiPen. These things cannot be controlled by trash left, cannot be controlled, but trash left behind, services to the public, services, services provided can. Not allowing quasi-public to Pine Key Island will not just affect the island, but also affect the people that go there just to escape just for a little while. Being a private island and maintaining all the public needs is tiring, but quasi-public will give us the funds and give us everything we need to proceed to the next step. Thank you for your time.
Madam Chair, just to let you know, we do have Lowell Beckner on the line as well.
Okay, and we'll let him speak.
Thank you, Madam Chair and the Commissioners. My name is Lowell Buckner. I live at 6412 Morris Shores Lane and I have a direct view of the island. Over the, we moved in here in 2015 and over the past years, I've gotten to know all of the owners of the island personally. They have nothing but pure intentions for this island. It is a wonderful recreational spot and I am an avid boater. When I get a chance, I may, I go out to the island. When I can't go out to the island, I sit on my terrace and I look at all the people having fun out there. I have seen their pontoon boat loaded with trash to take off the island. They keep the island clean, they keep the island secure, and they provide recreational services to not only the local residents, but the tourists. So I think that they should be have the public quasi-public use. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. So is that the last speaker?
Yes, Madam Chair.
Okay, thank you so much. I know it's hard to keep up, but you do a great job there letting us know who's online, so thank you. And with that, we will move to applicant rebuttal has up to three minutes. If you like, you can waive your rebuttal. I didn't hear any negative comments. I don't know if, if there's anything you'd like to add.
No, just that I appreciate everybody's comments and we, we plan to continue to serve the community. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, and with that, we'll now move to board discussion. Commissioner Smith, you're recognized.
Thank you. First, I have a couple of questions. Why, why wouldn't they, and I guess this is for planning commission staff, why wouldn't they apply for the N, natural preservation designation? What would they have to give up under that designation as opposed to the public quasi-public, which the planning commission finds has, you know, the threat of too many larger and intense uses allowed?
The natural preservation is intended for more of a passive uses and I think the uses that the applicant intending may not be passive-type uses.
Well, you know, I...
May I add to that?
No.
May I add to that?
No, I'm sorry. This is only for board discussion or who, and those who the board calls on.
Right, and if I, if I could, the, with Ms. Mills, we do have some properties with the natural preservation designation that does have buildings, for example, Camp Ayew is owned by ELAP. It's designation is natural preservation. It's, it's an unusual county preserve because it does have more active uses in buildings. They've got a, you know, a fossil museum. They have some buildings moved there. They have canoeing and kayaking going out of there. They have a large pavilion that's, that's very lovely, by the way. There's some area of Cockroach Bay ELAP land that has trailer and offices and garages on it that is designated in for natural preservation. Those are just the ones I, I thought of off the top of my head. I don't know if there's others. So it's not like the N prohibits some heavier uses or, or was that, were they grandfathered in or, or what? Can, can you explain why there are some N areas that, that do have some more, somewhat more intense buildings than just empty preserve, but wouldn't, you know, allow industrial or, or anything major?
Sure. I can't really speak for the, the other areas that you're speaking of with the natural preservation, future land use classification, but what I will add is that the natural preservation future land use classification also has a restrictive covenant requirements, so that may not, also may not get the applicant to where they would want to be as far as the uses that they would like in the end.
Mm-hmm. I will say that this is not the only privately-owned island in Hillsborough County, not by a long shot. There is a privately-owned island in the Alephaya River owned by a private, one private owner on, on the property appraiser's site. There's, there's a house on an island in Ruskin, south of the Little Manatee River. I don't know who owns that now, but of course, several larger islands are owned by the port and Mosaic owns Bird Island and I believe the one adjacent to it. So those are privately-owned islands that could be sold into other private hands later on if it turns out that in Hillsborough County, you can do intense stuff on islands that would make them more valuable. The, I, I don't for a minute doubt the good intentions of the current owners and, and I'm, I'm convinced that they have been good stewards considering what was happening when nobody owned the island, considering there was trash and, you know, that it was not taken care of. The trouble is when you consider putting a comp plan designation that allows maybe more than you'd want to see there, but you take the promises of the well-intentioned owners currently, you, you can never ratchet that down. You, you're given that ability to that property and I've seen this happen time and time again. I've had, seen it happen in my own neighborhood where the applicant has maybe brought in renderings and pictures of what they intend and, and Commissioner Kemp will remember that environmental project that was sold to this county and then never materialized, but I know that's not the case in, in this case, but the point is that once they've got that land use designation and it's privately owned, they can sell it to somebody else, markets change, somebody else comes in and says, wow, now that it's got that comp plan designation, we could put something pretty heavy on there. It will give, you know, will give you a bazillion dollars or, or whatever, plans change and then it's, it's too late to take that back. And so, you know, I'm sure the planning commission was faced with the same difficult decision in, in looking at this and finally deciding that the PQP designation is a bridge too far for an island in Tampa Bay, but given that there are other islands and this would also be setting precedent, I, I, I certainly don't want to see this go down in flames, but I don't want to have unintended consequences. And one thing I was thinking is they could go back and work with the, with the planning commission staff and see whether the N designation would work, whether the planning commission's recommendation for creating a new designation would work. I know that the city of Tampa has a recreational open space land use category that we don't have that might be appropriate for the, for the county, but I was also thinking of the possibility of creating within the comprehensive plan, like probably within the coastal management element. You know how we have community plans that live in the livable communities element and there'll be the Keystone Plan and the Ruskin Plan? That's all in the livable communities element. What if in the coastal management element, there was a kind of an islands community plan, coastal and areas and islands community plan in a way? I mean, with goals and policies and an overlay of, of the islands where you would get a little bit more nuanced about what could be done on certain islands, like, I mean, on Mosaic's Bird Island, you would not want that turned into even this, even this use because of the very sensitive environmental habitat for birds that nest on the beach and, and the, the wildlife habitat there. You would not want those islands to be sold later into private hand. You would not want those islands to be sold later into private hands and given public quasi-public, even to do what these people are doing on this very different island with the high wave action and the idea that it's not, you know, sensitive or critical bird habitat. I don't know. So I am not prepared today to say, as much as I'd like to say, go ahead with your plans today. And if PQP is all we got, well, here you go. I'm not prepared to do that tonight. I don't know if my fellow commissioners are or not. But what I would suggest is similar to what the Planning Commission suggested, try to create something within the comprehensive plan that would speak to what can and can't be done on certain islands, given certain situation. Or, you know, with a little map, like Ruskin Community Plan has four areas in Ruskin, which is pretty small. And you can do some things here and other things there and certain lot sizes there. You could conceivably do that kind of thing over all the islands, those in the rivers, those in the bay that are still privately-owned and flesh that out with help from our environmental, natural resources people and EPC about what's, where there's critical bird nesting grounds, where there's significant wildlife habitat, where there is a critical mangrove habitat and such. So that we don't just begin to say, okay, anybody who comes in with an island can have public quasi-public. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Overman?
The challenge I have with this is, well, for first disclosure, I have been there. I've been there many times with my family and we've recreated there, not realizing it was private property. Not realizing that someone owned it. And while we respected the property and didn't leave trash behind, that was not always the case. Now that we have owners that are actually managing the property, utilizing it for what appears to be a public use. I mean, yes, they are looking to try and make sure that they are identifying those folks that are there and providing what they've described as their method of identifying the folks that have permission to be there when they're there. I think that's, my question is, while we have the applicant coming as a quasi, you know, public quasi-public application, my question is, the next step is the zoning, correct? So if in fact it is being used as a public area or quasi-public area that would allow certain uses within the comp plan, the next step is the zoning area that could in fact provide the restrictions or the protections that we would anticipate would be appropriate in that area. Is that correct? We could limit the uses for the things that would seem to be too robust within the broad description of the comp plan that may not be appropriate. For example, it talks about having a hospital. Obviously, that would work. But, and we would, you know, the area itself would not be conducive to septic. So because it's out there, there's no fresh water out there. There are a variety of restrictions that would be naturally in place under our zoning that would come under, at that next step. Is that correct? Am I reading that right?
Yes, Commissioner, that is correct. If, once the property has a future land use designation, that would be the initial guide for what could be developed on the site through the zoning. That would be reviewed with the other policies in the comprehensive plan and with the site conditions. So yes, the specific uses would be narrowed and identified through the zoning that would be consistent with the comprehensive plan and the future land use category that it does receive.
Okay. And so then my next question is, and related to your comment, Commissioner Smith, about the option of going with the natural preservation option. You know, I would love to get staff's opinion on examples of natural preservation properties that we have in our region that have similar levels of types of activities within that allowance. In other words, to your point, are they able to do all the things they're doing now, we're using the natural preservation, if in fact it's found that the application of public quasi-public is actually too broad to permit the kinds of things that are concerning for an area that may or may not be a natural preservation type of spot? If in fact it does not have, because of the high-action water that's passing through the channels at that point, it doesn't have the same kind of estuary that Bird Key has or the same kind of, the type of natural environment possible that some of our other islands that are, whether privately-owned or not, in the rivers. So I'm curious, do you have any examples of where this kinds of activities are on properties that are zoned? Or, I mean, sorry, where the comp plan would indicate a natural preservation? Because if that were the case, it would be hard to understand why we're going down this route if it was very clear that there are other examples under natural preservation where it was allowed for them to do what they're doing.
So Commissioner, I'm not familiar with other natural preservation land areas. I did look up, look at Camp Bayou, and it does, it does seem to be a, there are structures on the site. It does seem to be oriented towards more passive activities than active. And I'm not intimately familiar with all that goes on there. I think that what was identified is that the activities that are going on on the site with inflatable slides and potentially concerts and food service was deemed to be a bit more active than passive than what we typically see in a natural preservation category.
Okay.
If I could just kind of, that has...
That's, I mean, that's all I had. I was just trying to discern what the difference is and things that do exist. Because they are doing things that actually are better than what was there when there was no zoning or there was no comp plan. And so in the event that we have an opportunity to create the structure to allow them not to live in the world of code violations and arrests, of doing what the entire county and other people that have enjoyed being there at some point in time are trying to say, how do we go about doing this legally and safely? And it sounds like there does need to be a framework for that conversation.
Right. And one thing, and I don't know that this provides answers, but a couple, well, a couple of things is, and I think for, you know, we've heard, I think, I haven't heard from anybody that didn't believe that the, as Commissioner Smith said, that there's good stewardship on Pine Key Island, that there's been significant changes made, that there's many, many people who are enjoying it and is providing a place that people really care about and, you know, that gives them an opportunity that they don't have other places. But that being said, I think there's just two paths that have been suggested besides the natural preservation. And that's one is that there could be another category that's created of some sort. That was one of the options that could be brought forward. And the second thing that I wondered about was in terms of the zoning. We have on occasion done both a future land use change with a zoning paired with it. And, you know, I just wondered about, in these unique circumstances, I don't know how other commissioners would feel about that or if that would provide some way to go forward as well that would be, that would work for the kinds of concerns that we're having. Commissioner Cohen?
Thank you very much, Madam Chair. I mean, this is difficult because it's such a unique situation. And as I'm listening, a couple, there are a couple of things that just I'd like to throw out to everybody. I know this option of perhaps creating a new land use designation is out there. My concern is that we're gonna, these people are gonna have to incur an enormous expense to go through that process. And, you know, I think that, from my understanding, they've come to us because they're just trying to make legal what is their practice on the island now. And we all recognize that it's been vastly improved. So I think we've got to find a way to, whatever direction we go in, to help them get there in a way that's not gonna force them not to be able to do anything because of the expense of it. And along the lines where Commissioner Overman was going, and perhaps it could be done simultaneously, as Commissioner Kemp said, it would seem to me that the way to guard against any kind of crazy outcome here would be to have zoning conditions attached to it. But we should recognize that, I mean, as I was going through the possibilities this afternoon of what could be put here under public quasi-public, it was things like hospitals and schools. And that's crazy. I mean, even if that's allowed, there's no way they could possibly ever do it. There's no services there. There's no, there's no ability to get anyone to those places. So, you know, I think we need some guidance from the staff of how we can get this applicant from A to B without breaking the bank. And, you know, if it's with this designation and zoning conditions, that's one way to do it. If there's another designation that can be either invented or found, that's another. But I don't think we should just leave them out there casting along for a solution because it's not fair. I mean, we've got a, it's not their fault that this island was never given a land use designation.
Well, no, but of course it was bought, purchased without one and without...
No, I understand.
So I'm not, it's not to say that there hasn't been good things done, but the... I think it sounds like part of, what they're doing sounds very good and reasonable. But those maybe have to be kind of conditions within a zoning so that should this change hands. And I can imagine there has to be some limitations. One of my first ones is when I went by the island, you know, on a Saturday, it was just packed. And I don't know how exactly. I know there were some suggestions made about how you contain that, how you deal with septage in that, how you deal with if dangerous conditions come quickly. If there's just, you know, there's a myriad of issues that can come, particularly if you're holding big events there and overnight camping, which I don't know that happens right now. Maybe it does. And, but all of these can, you know, bring certain issues and problems in the future. Someone might say, what were you thinking? I mean, in terms of us and what we approve and move forward, and also just to approve a general category without those conditions, I think, or a zoning attached to it, which they have just said they need anyway. And that would be a step moving forward in that direction. And I agree with you. You don't want to, you know, look at onerous conditions going forward that make it impossible to have some, something like the use that's going on or that they're requesting. But I think there probably has to be looked at too, should, with the best of intentions and the best stewardship now for the future or precedent-wise, I just think there's, you know, it's sounding more to me like a paired zoning that has the kinds of conditions that they've talked about. And maybe that could be thought through a little more by the staff. I'm not sure, you know, what limitations might be advisable, you know, that haven't been or conditions that haven't been suggested. Because as we've all said, this is just very new territory for any of us, I think even for the staff, for certain. So there's several commissioners recognized. Commissioner Smith, you're recognized.
Thanks. Just a couple of points. You know, Commissioner Overman and I was thinking along the same ways you do. Okay, we've got this comp plan designation. It allows too much, so fine, then we do a zoning that restricts it. But when we do, if we put a comp plan designation on for RES 20, and then somebody comes in and says, great, I've got RES 29120 per acre. And you go, oh, we didn't mean for you to have 20 per acre there. Those really only should have four per acre there or, and stuff that's much more limited. Well, that's when they take us to court and challenge our decision. Because the comprehensive plan is where you say, what, you know, legislatively, what you can have where. And so that's my concern about later. And also the, you know, the precedent of the other privately-owned islands in the bay. And once we start saying, well, this one can have this, I just wonder about that. For me, I'd like to see them sit down with Planning Commission staff and bring, try to bring back something that either looks a little harder at the N designation, given that I do know of at least two places with that designation. I think I heard them say, Ms. Mills, did you say that it encumbers the property in a way they don't want to be encumbered? The N designation?
That's correct.
What does that mean?
A restrictive easement would have to be put on the property if they were to go to natural preservation?
Great. I mean, it's obviously not limiting some other places or it doesn't seem to me to be limiting some other places. Maybe that needs to be explored a little bit more because I think what we might all be able to compromise and agree on is some of these uses, but with some kind of conservation easement encumbered so they can go farther than what the plan is. But, I mean, I'd like to maybe continue this hearing and ask that in the interim, the applicant work with the Planning Commission staff, hearing the direction of the board is to try to find a solution other than no that would, you know, protect the islands with some other kind of comprehensive plan designation. So I'll make that motion. Is that, does that make sense to continue while we're sending them back to work with the Planning Commission staff on this?
Commissioner, I think a continuance would be appropriate for that. It does leave the application still pending and doesn't dispose of it one way or another. If they were to move to a different land use classification, that would take some renoticing. However, a continuance at this point would keep that application still alive and viable.
And then if they've found a solution, they could withdraw this application and go in another direction.
It would provide that opportunity, yes.
So that would be my motion.
Can I second with a question?
I have a question.
Okay. If it were continued, that would, whatever code violations they're trying to cure by this action would be stayed while it was, the continuance was in effect, correct?
Yes, I believe so. The Code Board has been interested that the owners have been actively pursuing a resolution. I'd say that this is, would still constitute them pursuing that resolution.
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Smith and seconded by Commissioner Cohen to continue this with hopes of kind of more reaching some resolutions of what might be more appropriate in the discussion with the board with regards to this. And I have a couple of commissioners, okay, Commissioner Overman, you're recognized.
No, I was --
Then she took it off, and then she put it back on.
No, because I just wanted to add to the motion when Commissioner Cohen said he wanted to ask a question, I thought you would hear me at the same time, but if not.
Oh, you seconded the motion when he seconded?
Yes, and I was, and I wanted to speak too at the same time when he --
Oh, okay. No, I didn't, and I saw your, I was about to call on you next, and then I saw it disappear, and then it came back.
I think we all have shared good comments. And this is a unique project, no doubt about it. But from all the time that the applicant has put in in trying to make a very nice island that they can continue to use, I do agree with Commissioner Smith that they go back to the Planning Commission and try to work it out, and then add the zoning. So, if there's something they need to look at to zone and to include all parties to make it happen, to see how we can really help them with their trying to do here. And that was, and maybe they can come back on December the 16th. Would that give you all enough time, or, since this is a continuance?
Yes, ma'am, I believe that would give enough time to explore all the --
Now, we have all parties involved.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Uh-huh.
Just, I'm sorry, just to clarify, we wouldn't be able to come back with a zoning to be approved on the 16th, but we could come back with, yes, the status and information, yes.
And I think that's why it's important to make sure that we have the applicant understanding what the process is. And to Commissioner Kemp's point earlier, we have had situations where we've had a comp plan amendment and a zoning with it. And I think the challenge we're having in looking at the circumstances is the comp plan is broad on purpose, because it gives us an opportunity to address what we would like to see, given our land design and growth plans, correct? But we have an island with a hospital on it. It's called Davis Island, okay? So, there is an island, now it's not privately owned specifically, but we have a very large island with all kinds of stuff on it, right? So, if, but it's not zoned this way. That's actually zoned as, you know, as a piece of land that has homes and hospitals and buildings and restaurants, and is able to be serviced with, you know, public services and utilities and all those kinds of things because of its proximity. This particular piece, because as we are discovering, we don't have circumstances within our plans to address the isolation that this particular piece of property has. I mean, is Egmont Key zoned? Does it have a comp plan designation? Does anybody know? And it's an island way out there.
It does. It has a zoning designation, which means it's gonna have a comp plan designation. Mostly AR, there's some, actually, believe it or not, multifamily zoning on the --
Seriously?
Yes.
Okay, that's fascinating.
Where the pilots used to live on the island.
Right, yeah. Well, this is the opportunity to address what we don't have in our plan, which is, you know, a water-based community that has limited opportunity for urban level or even rural level services. And I think there is where, you know, our concerns sort of lie, because we won't be able to provide septic systems there. They're not permitted. There's no way to have water services there. There is the need to address the potential for law enforcement and fire rescue services if it is part of a formalized part of the community. However, that being said, I do like the continuance, because, you know, using the, as the property has been used for decades and decades and decades seems, and to have code enforcement violations as a consequence of that is troubling. And so, I would like to see us work with the applicant as much as possible, and if at all possible, get a zoning at least agreement or direction to the applicant so that they can move forward and still be able to work in a way that helps them get where they need to go. Because honestly, if we turned it all down, what's happening there is not gonna go away. You know, they may take this stuff off the property and it'll go back to what it was, which is, everybody's just there, and trespassing on their property, rather than having someone that's actually being responsible and taking care of the property as it stands now. So, I agree that I'll support the continuance, but I would like to see staff work very closely with them to help them get where they need to go, so that we can allow this property owner to responsibly manage the property without necessarily taking it to a point where it creates a public health risk or a danger to the community.
Okay. And seeing no further discussion, we do have a motion for a continuance by Commissioners, by Commissioner Smith, seconded by Commissioners Cohen and Myers, and seeing no further comment at this time, can you please do a roll call vote?
Chair Kemp?
Commissioners, can we clarify the date? Is the date to December 16?
16th or, or the 16th?
16th.
Okay. And seeing no further comments at this time, please do a roll call vote.
Chair Kemp?
Yes.
Cohen?
Yes.
Hagan?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Overman?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Thank you, motion carried, six to zero.
Thank you. And that concludes our items, but we do have to do a motion and vote to approve, do we just approve the one ordinance, the first, or the first?
I don't believe any of your ordinances were approved.
We did vote for the transmittal originally.
Yeah, that has already been disposed of.
Right, and so we didn't have, okay.
So, there is no needed action on an ordinance at this time.
Okay. Thank you. So, we are concluding now. Do we have, are these, the LDC?
I was gonna say, don't we have an LDC?
So, do we adjourn now and then?
I was gonna say, no, I think we have an LDC. Don't we?
Do we adjourn officially this and then, okay, so we'll adjourn, and, I don't know, do people want five minutes or something, or do we just move?
Let's just get this done.
Okay. Keep moving forward, we're adjourned, and now we will open up our Land Development Code public hearing. I'll recognize the staff of Development Services, who will provide an introduction to tonight's Land Development Code Amendment Public Hearing Agenda.
Agent Commissioners, this is Gil Moretta for the record.
Yes.
We have five amendments tonight, Commissioners. This is the second of two public hearings. If you recall, we've been before the board in August in a workshop. We've also workedshopping the Planning Commission, had a public outreach meeting as a follow-up to our email blast that we do as part of the outreach. We also had our first public hearing a few weeks ago on September 30th, and we've had a consistency finding with the Planning Commission on October 4th. This brings the process to a close. The five amendments tonight will require a vote or some type of action at the conclusion of either each amendment or the group of the amendments. Mr. Tom Hisnay of our staff is gonna be available. He's gonna walk the board through the slides. We'll try to keep it concise, because I know you've had a long night, and up to this point, we haven't had a lot of questions about the amendments. So, I'll turn it over to Tom, and we also have other available staff that are part of the hearing in case questions come up about certain subject matters. So, that concludes my presentation. I'll turn it over to Mr. Hisnay. Thank you.
Good evening, Commissioners. The first amendment that we'll discuss tonight is LDC 21-1047. The purpose of this amendment is to clarify review process for certain regulations in the Land Development Code regarding connectivity, cross-access, access points, and other transportation-related review criteria as part of the plan development rezoning process. I'm available for, I'm sorry, Mike Williams of our staff is available for any questions. I believe there may also be members of the public who wish to discuss this amendment.
So, we'll go to our public hearing now, and I do not have those speakers, so I'm not sure who we have, if someone can let me know.
I believe we had two people sign up to speak, Jake Kremer and I can't recall the other name, but I believe they have logged out. I'm not sure.
Okay, so there's no one logged in to speak?
Okay.
Okay, so we'll --
That's correct.
We'll close the public hearing then, and so we'll take a vote on each one of these?
Yes, I would recommend that taking an individual vote on each amendment prior to the final ordinance, just for clarity's sake.
Sure.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Smith, seconded by Commissioner Cohen. Seeing no further discussion, please record, I'm sorry, do a roll call vote.
Chair Kemp?
Yes.
Cohen?
Yes.
Hagan?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Overman?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Thank you, motion carried, six to zero.
Thank you. And we'll move to the next item.
The next amendment is LDC 21-1045. This concerns the garbage and recycling infrastructure requirements for new construction of commercial and multifamily development, and the purpose of it is to ensure adequate service levels for new construction of those types of projects. Israel Monsanto of our staff is available for any questions.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Smith and seconded by Commissioner Overman, but before we do that, let me just make sure, public hearing is, this is a public hearing? Is there anyone that is signed up and present to speak?
No. Chair, we have no one signed up to speak.
Okay, so we'll close the item, and what a great picture. So, with that, we have a motion by Commissioner Smith, seconded by Commissioner Overman. Seeing no further discussion, please do a roll call vote.
Chair Kemp?
Yes.
Cohen?
Yes.
Hagan?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Overman?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Thank you, motion carried, six to zero.
Thank you, and we'll move to the next item. Mr. Hisnay?
Yes, the next item is LDC 21-1046. This amendment will establish a timeframe limit for reopen or remanded public hearing applications. That timeframe would be six months. Israel Monsanto of our staff is available for questions.
Thank you. And this is a public hearing, is there anyone signed up and ready to speak?
Madam Chair, we have no one signed up to speak.
Move the item.
Okay, so we'll close the public hearing. We have Commissioner Overman moving the item, seconded by Commissioner Smith. Commissioner Smith, you're recognized.
I just wanted to say, I'm very excited about this one, so that's all.
Great, thank you. Okay, and with that, can we have a roll call vote, please?
Chair Kemp?
Yes.
Cohen?
Yes.
Hagan?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Overman?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Thank you, motion carried, six to zero.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Hisnay.
Our next amendment is LDC 21-1044. This amendment is going to revise our Land Development Code regulations regarding the package sale of alcoholic beverages by certain restaurants to conform with changes to state law in this regard. It would allow, in the limited circumstances, package sales under our wet zoning categories that otherwise prohibit package sales. I'm available for any questions.
Thank you. This is a public hearing, is there anyone signed up and prepared to speak, present?
Madam Chair, we have no one signed up to speak.
Okay, closing the public hearing and --
Move the item.
Second.
Commissioner Cohen moved the item, seconded by Commissioners Smith and Myers. Seeing no further comments, can we please do a roll call vote?
Chair Kemp?
Yes.
Cohen?
Yes.
Hagan?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Overman?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Thank you, motion carried, six to zero.
Okay, and we'll move to the final LDC.
This is, this is LDC 21-1156. This regulation will replace existing regulations in the code for home-based businesses and home-based swimming instructions to conform with preemptive state law that went into effect on July 1st. I am available for any questions.
Okay, thank you. This is a public hearing, is there anyone signed up or ready to speak?
No, Madam Chair, there's no one signed up.
Okay, we're closing the public hearing.
Move the item.
Commissioner Overman, seconded by Commissioner Myers. Seeing no further discussion, can you please do a roll call vote?
Chair Kemp?
Yes.
Cohen?
Yes.
Hagan?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Overman?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Thank you, motion carried, six to zero.
Okay, and at this time, do we have a motion to approve the ordinance adopting the Land Development Code amendments that were approved by the board?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Cohen, seconded by Commissioner Myers. I don't know if there were others, but, okay. And hearing no further discussion, can you please do a roll call vote?
Commissioner, just before you, just to clarify, these amendments will become effective upon filing with the state.
Thank you.
Chair Kemp?
Yes.
Cohen?
Yes.
Hagan?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Overman?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Thank you, motion carried, six to zero.
Okay, I believe we stand adjourned now. Thank you.
Excellent, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioners.